I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the first Commissioner Court meeting of the month of October, the regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, October the 12th, it's little after 9:00 a.m. in the Central Jury Room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. Today, we have the wonderful Pastor Mike McMahon here to do the invocation. So Pastor McMahon, would you come up here, please? You know, we've lost Dr. Bill Miller, who was getting thing, and Mike McMahon is a member of our lunch group, and he said that he's gonna always come up here for occasions just like this, in case somebody doesn't make it, and we're sure glad you did, Pastor McMahon, so please.
Father, thank you for this morning. Thank you for the opportunity to come together as brothers and sisters in Christ and in honor of our country. Thank you for what is about to take place, the business that has to be done this morning. Let it be done without rancor. Let it be done in peace and love, but let it be true, let it be thorough, and let it be effective. We thank you, Father, for this, and in the name of Jesus, we love you. Amen.
Amen. Kate, how would you join me in to pledge allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
To the pledge of the flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Okay. I want to just remind everybody that since this is the first regular meeting of the month, we have open mic, and you must fill out a public participation form before we get to the citizen at large, if you want to speak. We have one citizen already, and then if you want to speak on the agenda, you must also fill out a public participation form. So please do that, because we're trying to keep order, so that we can have and give everybody a chance to speak. So the first thing that we do have is special presentation. Is there anybody here from the substance abuse awareness? There you go. Come, please come to the... Y'all sign these, please. Hi, would you introduce yourselves, please?
Certainly. I'm Teresa Turner, the Director of the Hood County Substance Abuse Council. This is Mike Head, our new Coordinator.
Okay, good. Would you please tell us what you got here?
What we have here is proclamation to designate October as Substance Abuse Awareness Month.
Okay. Now, we have a proclamation that we're gonna all sign here. Do you have anything you would like to say, just in general, about Substance Abuse Month and what you're doing here in Hood County?
Yeah, well, we have partnered up with the Mission Granbury to tie ribbons on the square. We have other public awareness, we have programs in the school, and some special online things, and a fundraiser scheduled for this month are some of the activities that we have going.
Okay. Sir, would you like to say anything?
I think she pretty much said it all.
That's a...
We also have...
I'm gonna go ahead and read this proclamation.
I didn't get it signed yet. My pen ran out.
One of our Commissioners is absent today. He's in getting some schooling.
Somebody got a black pen.
I don't have a black pen. This is black, black pen. They got it.
I always sign here blue.
Jack, is your pen blue or is it black?
Black.
Can I borrow that to finish my signature?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I ran out of ink right in the middle of it.
Hate it when that happens.
This month, we also have the DEA Drug Take Back Day in three locations, and for the first year, we're gonna be giving out child safety locks for cabinets and medication lock boxes as well.
Okay, well, good.
To help keep medications safe.
Well, y'all do a good job. I mean, substance abuse is something that every county and every state has a problem with, and it's something that we really need to take care of. But I'm gonna come down there with you, and I'll read this. So that you won't be got here by yourself. Let's turn around here, so that maybe we can... I think everybody can still... Proclamation to designate October as Substance Abuse Awareness Month. Whereas every day, thousands of young Americans try drugs or alcohol for the first time, and many, this decision will have a profound impact on their health and well-being. Whereas every day, far too many Americans are hurt by alcohol and drug abuse. From diminished achievement in our schools, to greater risk on our roads and in our communities, to the heartbreak of lives cut tragically short, the consequences of substance abuse are profound. Whereas preventing substance abuse before it begins is the most effective way to eliminate the damage caused by drugs and the abuse of alcohol. Together, we can make sure all children have the opportunity to pursue happy, fulfilling, and productive lives. Whereas adult role models play an integral part in preventing youth substance abuse, we must lead by example, adopt positive behaviors, and talk to our kids about living substance-free. This month, we stand with local coalitions and community organizations as they advance their drive to keep young people, families, and our Hood County community free from drug and alcohol abuse. Whereas substance abuse affects everyone, and each of us can play a part in helping the next generation make choices that support physical, mental, behavioral, and emotional health. Parents, mentors, and community members can model a healthy lifestyle and should talk with kids freely and often about the dangers of drug and alcohol use. During National Substance Abuse Awareness Month, we recognize all those who work to prevent substance abuse in our community. Whereas we have invested in outreach programs that empower young adults with the facts about substance abuse, and we have worked to stem the tide of restriction drug abuse through education, monitoring, proper disposal, and enforcement. Now therefore, the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim October 2021 as Substance Abuse Awareness Month, and urges all Hood County residents to duly note this occasion by doing all we can to support all community prevention and education programs, and make substance abuse awareness a public health priority. Sign this 12th day of October 2021. Ron Massengill, County Judge, and all the Commissioners, except Commissioner Eagle, who is in school today, have signed this proclamation, and we are so thankful, Ms. Tuma, for your help in doing this. And I'm gonna give you one, and I'll take back one myself. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Judge. I appreciate it.
She's gonna take one picture, so...
Don't mess around.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you so much.
And they're the ones that put all these pretty ribbons around the courthouse to bring everybody's attention to this important issue. Thank you. This is a big awareness month up here. It is also October 2021, it's also Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Do we have anybody here from the domestic awareness? This three young ladies here. I'm gonna let... Do y'all have the proclamation?
I did not bring it with me.
You don't? I'll tell you what, we're gonna pass this around, and I'm gonna read it. Is that all right with y'all?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Y'all can turn around and face, and let everybody know who y'all are, because this is really important, too.
Okay. My name is Shelley Muncie. I'm the Shelter Director at Mission Granbury.
I'm Dr. Freeman. I'm a case manager at Mission Granbury for the shelter.
Ed?
And I promise you this.
I'm Chris Wildey. I'm the non-residential case manager for victims.
Good. Thank all of y'all for being here today. And this is a proclamation to designate October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that touches all communications regardless of age, race, disability, gender, identity, or social economic status. And whereas the Hood County Commissioners Court recognizes and participates in a public awareness campaign to support National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the organization and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. And whereas, on an average, nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner in the United States, which equates to more than 10 million people who experience domestic violence annually. One in four women and one in nine men experience severe intimate partner violence sometime in their lifetime. And whereas, on a typical day, there are more than 20,000 phone calls to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. Mission Granbury received and responded to 447 hotline calls last year. The need for safe housing continues to be rated as Survivor's Most Urgent Need. And whereas Mission Granbury provides a safe haven shelter for women and children who are victims of domestic violence, Mission Granbury's Ada Carey Shelter provided shelter and other services to 58 women and 28 children last year. And whereas preventing domestic violence means changing the social norms that allow and condone violence, and requires the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institutions, and systems, each wholeheartedly committed to transforming our community. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victim service providers, the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urges all Hood County residents to become involved in efforts to prevent and respond to domestic violence and recognize the impact it has in our community. Sign this 12th day of October 2021. Ron Massengill, County Judge, Kevin Andrews, Commissioner Precinct 1, Ronald Cotton, Precinct 2, Jack Wilson, Precinct 3, Dave Eagle, like I said, is attending school today. So he's not here, but I want to hand each of you... Hand one to y'all for you to take back. Y'all wanna pose for a picture?
Yes, and can I mention one of... An event that we have coming up?
Yes.
Okay.
First week into this, so...
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know that we have an event coming up, October 23rd. It's called Light the Night. We do this annually. This is an event that we have to recognize the victims that were murdered in Texas in 2020. There were actually 228 victims, and we also have this event not only to recognize them and to honor them, but to celebrate the survivors as well. It's going to be on the city beach at 7:30 p.m. on October 23rd. It's a free event. If you guys can come out, we'd really appreciate it. Or spread the word, please. We'd love to have people come out. Thank you.
That's very important. Thank you for that. Let's get around here, and we could... Can you get it all here in a picture? Y'all do a very important job. Thank you very, very much for coming down here and doing this. Thank all of you, really. It's very important. Remember that? Okay, there are no service awards?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. The citizens at large comments, we have one public information form, and that is Mr. Mark Lowery. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Lowery.
Honorable Judge and Commissioners, my name is Mark Lowery. I'm a resident of Hood County since 2014, 3712 Lonesome Creek Road in Decordova Ranch. A few weeks ago, I came before the court to speak about the Elections Administrator and our concern as far as her not being prepared at the special election, but more importantly, the integrity of our election system. At the time, we submitted some questions and asked... Respectfully asked that the court sat down with her in a public environment and asked those questions. I now understand that the Elections Administrator has resigned her position. I respectfully ask the court, as they move forward, if they decide to reassign those duties to a county employee already on the staff, and/or if they look for a new member to hire in that position, that integrity of our election system, specifically consecutive number ballots, be an issue that is addressed during this process to ensure that the integrity of our election system is at the highest level here in Hood County. The other issue I did want to bring up is, a few months ago, we talked about the fire department, the emergency fire department here, volunteer fire department. There was a number of signatures presented for an item to be placed upon the November election that was rejected by the court. I do ask, though, that the Commissioners Court don't lose their eye on the ball of this. It's a very important topic. I know Mr. Andrews down at the end is very focused on it, but I would like the court to continue to focus on our fire department, whether it's going to remain a volunteer fire department or not, but make sure that they have the appropriate assets and equipment that they have been asking for and needed throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowery. Okay. Now we're going into the consent agenda. Does any of the Commissioners wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Motion.
Okay? If not, do I hear an appropriate motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the commission... The consent agenda, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Four zero, I'm sorry. Confused saying that.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. The next thing that we have up here is Road Ops, Mr. Donald Lenny. What do you have here for us?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is discussing considering placing a chip seal and fog seal on the front parking lot of Acton Annex. Speaking with Commissioner Cotton and Commissioner Wilson, it is... It's been since 2015 since we've done a sealing on that parking lot, and there are a couple of spots that do need... The infrastructure has worn away, and we need to repair it, and then perhaps do a chip seal to make it last a lot longer, what it's going to.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or discussions of Mr. Lenny?
No, I had a meeting with Mr. Lenny. We went over the issues out there. It is starting to crack, and if we don't get it sealed, and we get through another winter, I'm sure it's gonna turn to gravel. So I think it's gonna be well worth the time, money to spend it now to get it in shape is to take care of that traffic in the parking... Front parking lot of the Acton Annex.
So you recommend we do that, Mr. Lenny?
Yes, sir. If the court approves, I believe it's needed.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to allow placing a chip seal and fog seal on the front parking lot of the Acton Annex.
Second. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Cotton to place a chip seal and fog seal on the front parking lot of Acton Annex, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Ms. Lenny. Development, Mr. Clint Head.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners. First item I have today is Development's updated applications for replats of Alhead Shores, Section B, Lot 63R and 64R on Block 1 in Precinct 1. Walnut Creek, Lot 1R, Block 9 in Precinct 3. Brazos River Acres, Section B, Lots 19R and 20R on Block 9 in Precinct 2. Staff recommends setting the public hearings for these replats for the November 9th, 2021, Commissioners Court.
Do I have any questions? Do I hear a motion to set these three?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to set the three public hearings for the replats on November 9th.
Second. Two seconds. Tied for seconds. We got real quick at the buzzer here. I'm gonna give it to Mr. Wilson here today. So motion's been made by Commissioner Andrews to set the replats for a public hearing on November the 9th, 2021, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay.
Next, we have a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of lots 203R1-1, 203R1-2, and 203R1-3, Rowland Creek Ranch, Phase 2.
Okay. Was convening to a public hearing at this point, and it is now 9:25. So what do you got here?
This replat's a subdivision of lots 203R1 of Rowland Creek Ranch, Phase 2. It'll be creating a 6.132 acres lot called 203R1-1, a 1.231 acres lot called 203R1-2, and a 1.441 acres lot called 203R1-3. This property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 3, and is served by public water and onsite wastewater facilities. Staff has reviewed this replat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the replat, lots 203R1-1, 203R1-2, and 203R1-3, Rowland Creek Ranch, Phase 2, as presented.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, we're now reconvening back into Commissioners Court. Do I hear an appropriate motion regarding the Rowland Creek Ranch?
I move that we reconsider the replat and go forward with, you know, for Rowland Creek Ranch, Phase 2, lots 203R1-1, or 203R1-2, and 203R1-3.
Your second. Second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the replat of the Rowland Creek Ranch, Phase 2, as stated in the record, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero.
This next agenda item requires no action. Development just wants to read into record that the construction plans for Luca Ranch have been reviewed by staff and engineer, and all comments have been addressed and have been approved. We're gonna do this prior to presenting the next agenda item.
Okay. So the next agenda item is to discuss and consider the developer's letter of agreement for performance bond, maintenance bond, and the final plan of Luca Ranch. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. What is your recommendation?
Um, give me read all the...
You did... Okay. We've got Mr. LaCroix here that would like to speak on that. Mr. LaCroix?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Joe LaCroix with Baird Hampton Brown Engineering. We're the consultant civil engineer on the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I appreciate your time this morning.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Looks like you're already moving dirt out there, putting in roads. Is... Or is that in the... That's in the first phase, isn't it?
They may be doing some rough grading, kind of clearing of trees and things like that. I don't believe they've started construction activities quite yet.
All right. You have any questions of him, of Mr. LaCroix, Mr. Head?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Judge.
Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to accept a letter of agreement, performance bond, maintenance bond, and a final plat of Luca Ranch.
Your second. Second. Okay. A motion is made by Commissioner Cotton to approve Development's letter of agreement, performance bond, maintenance bond, and final plan of Luca Ranch, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Mr. Head?
Next, we have a final plat of Tyler and Anna Wilson addition, Lot 1, Block 1. The property is located at 2790 Crest Ridge Drive, Granbury, Texas. The final plat will be creating a 2.145 acres lot out of the Samuel Watkins survey, abstract 575. This final plat is in the Water Quality District in Precinct 1, and will be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. There are no streets proposed with this plat. This lot will be accessing the existing Crest Ridge Drive. Staff has reviewed this final plat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the final plat of Tyler and Anna Wilson, Lot 1, Block 1, as presented.
Okay. Any questions? Discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the final plat of Tyler and Anna Wilson addition, Lot 1, Block 1.
Your second. Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Andrews to approve the final plat of Tyler and Anna Wilson addition, Lot 1, Block 1, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Mr. Head, you have too much business for this commission today.
We have a final plat of Moonshine Acres. That ought to help. Lot 1, Block 1 to this... This property is located at 615 Neary Road, Granbury, Texas. This final plat's creating a 4.528 acres lot out of the E.J. Johnson survey, abstract 292. This plat is located in the Rural District in Precinct 2, and is served by well and onsite sewage facilities. There are no streets proposed with this final plat. This lot will access the existing Neary Road. Staff has reviewed this final plat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the final plat, Moonshine Acres, Lot 1, Block 1, as presented.
Now, this Moonshine Acres, are you sure this is in Hood County and not in Somerville County?
It could be in Boski.
Have the revenuers looked at it?
Could be on Walnut Spring.
If you've been around here a long time, I see the long time... See me, Richard Haddocks back there laughing. You know what I'm talking about, don't you? Somerville is kind of noted for the moonshiners, and Hood County's not, but this is Moonshine Acres in Hood County, right? Yes, sir.
I have a right to remain silent, Judge.
Well, having duly noted that Mr. Haddock has a right to remain silent, do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the final plat of Moonshine Acres.
Okay. Commissioner Cotton has made a motion to approve the final plan of Moonshine Acres, Lot 1, Block 1, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Head. Doing good work. Okay, financial, Ms. Melinda Baird up here. Melody Baird. I was close. It was an N name.
Melinda, Melanie, we'll get it right.
It's all right. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
You've all been given information on this court for fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2022 expenditures. You've also been given advanced copies of the $10,000 or more payments, and so for fiscal year 2021, the expenditures were $509,036 in... And so, for fiscal year 2021, the expenditures were $509,036.24. Can you may go ahead and do fiscal year 22 as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then fiscal year 2022 was $344,221.69.
So, the reason you've broken it up is that our fiscal year ends on September the 30th. Is that correct?
Correct, correct. So, and we still had some old invoices with those dates.
So, you diligently looked at this and recommend payment?
We did. Our office pays very close attention to that, and we work closely with purchasing on that.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to pay the bills, fiscal year 2021, $509,036.24, and approving the invoices for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $344,221.69.
Second. Motion is been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the fiscal year 2021 bills and the fiscal year 2022 bills, and second by Commissioner Wilson for both fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 2022, and the amounts as stated by Ms. Melanie Baird. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Okay. What else you've got, Ms. Baird?
We've been very busy in our office. We have reviewed our annual audits for five departments. I don't know if you want to do those all individually or all together. Well, we've got some issues on some, so we may want to do them individually. So...
Well...
We can go with the ones that didn't have any issues, if you would like, or...
Well, did you have an issue on any of these?
So, Precinct 1, Constable Precinct 1 was good. Everything checked out fine on their audit. We diligently looked through everything, and our, myself and our assistant auditor found no issues with that. And there was no issues with Precinct 3, Constable Precinct 3, and there was no issues with Hood County Library. All those audits checked out really great. There were, however, a few, a couple of things with Constable Precinct 2 and Constable Precinct 4.
Okay.
So...
What, what were the thing, the issues with Precinct Constable 2, Precinct 2?
So, Constable Precinct 2, there was multiple monthly reports that were not turned in timely before the 15th of the month. We're not really sure what the issue is with that, with that, but we're working with, you know, we've communicated with them, but just not a lot of response, so...
Are there any monthly reports that are due at this time?
I believe, ask Kristen, I think we've got everything back on them.
Hi, Kristen, good morning.
Good morning. We have received them all now up to date. They were just behind for a while, but we have now received them all.
Okay. And for Precinct 4, Constable 4, you received all of them now, too?
As of now, yes, we have. We're still working on the current month, but all through the audit, yes, we've, we've received them all as of now.
Okay. So, both of y'all recommend for the Commissioners' Court to approve all of the Constable report?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Judge, just a couple, they, they gave us all copies of the write-up. It went to all the Commissioners, you and Judge Buffkin. And you're right, the issue they had with Constable 2 was late turning in their reports, because we have noticed that those are missing on the court.
Correct.
Time to time when, when we have regular court. And also, made a comment on the revenue comparison. It's just a question. They compared the revenue collected for the last two years in Constable 2 precinct, and it decreased by something like 23%.
Yes, sir, 23.10%. It was lower compared to last year.
It was kind of out of order with some of the other constables, which is pretty consistent, but with this one, it was down.
Considerably, yes.
And I noticed also on, in Precinct 4, I think we had kind of the same, same issue, didn't we?
Yes, Precinct 4 was down 35.96% since last year.
You know, I'm just glad you pointed that out to us. I don't know that we have a good reason for it, nor...
No, we don't, we don't know what the reason is for that.
It was just being noted that...
Just noted. We, we do a two-year comparison on all these audits, and, you know, that's what we found.
I appreciate the work that you did on it to keep us informed.
Well, thank you. And then we also noted that there was some money that needs to be S-Ged in Constable Precinct 2. There is a $30.33 outstanding money, and we will work with that department to get that S-Geded to over to where it needs to go. And then with Constable 4, there was a balance of 27 cents that's outstanding since February of 19 that will also work with them to get that S-Geded.
Books have got a balance, don't they?
That's right. We also had some issues with Constable 2's deposits. Well, there was one deposit that was collected May 6th and was not deposited until, in the Treasurer's Office until May 20th. And as you all know, deposits need to be in, in place or in the Treasurer's Office within five business days, at least five business days.
Within five business days?
Yes. And then...
Did he have an excuse for that?
I had no response.
No response.
Okay. But having, with these exceptions that have been discussed here on the record, other than that, are you recommending that the Commissioners' Court accept the reviews of all of the constables in all four precincts at this time?
We do, we do accept or do request that you do approve it. Like I said, we are going to work with them on some of these other issues as far as the monthly reports and the timely deposits. I mean, we will work with them as well. And like Kristen said, we have got this last month, and they are caught up. So, hopefully, this is the end of that, so...
Subject to that, do I hear a motion to accept and approve?
Judge, I'll, I'll make the motion to accept the review of Constable 1, Constable Precinct 1, Precinct 2, Precinct 3, Precinct 4, and the Hood County Library.
All right. Motion's been made by Commissioner Cotton to accept the 2021 review of Constable Precinct 1, 2, 3, and 4, and also the Hood County Library of Financial Records, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries four to one. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate your help.
It should be four to zero.
I sit, I sit four to zero?
It should be four to one, but it should be four to zero.
Well, seeing that, there's not a one here up here. I get mixed up. I keep thinking five in my head up here. Motion is approved, four to zero. Okay. Now, we get into the miscellaneous section up here in the first. I only have two. Is that right today? Okay. Okay. All right. Item number one, discuss and take appropriate action to affirm the Hood County Substance Abuse Council displaying a sign and red women's, red ribbons on or around the Courthouse Square in recognition of Substance Abuse Awareness Month in October. Do I hear a motion in that regard? Don't move. Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve and affirm the displaying of the red ribbons and signs around the courthouse in recognition of Substance Abuse Awareness Month in October, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion? Any opposition? Motion carries four zero. Item number two, discuss and take appropriate action to affirm Mission Granbury despairing 10 4-foot wooden ribbons around the Courthouse Square and 1 8-foot ribbon facing Pearl Street in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month in October. Hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the signage put up by the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Signage is already up, and y'all did a great job, and it looks wonderful, both of you. So, I hope it really does some good. Item number three, discuss and take appropriate action and allow the county judge to sign the Merrick Bank Merchant Processing Agreement Application and Fee Schedule. Ms. Katie Lang.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This is an automated merchant systems slash bridge, Bridge Pay credit card processing system, and this will allow us to process our credit card payments with software that works directly with Tyler software. And it'll take all the information from the credit card and deposit it into Tyler. And you can also, the customers can also go on, on the website, or not website, on, online, and fill out all their applications for marriage, death, all that stuff. They don't have to come into our office, they can do it online. And then they could pay for it online with a credit card. So, it's like a transaction gateway.
Is this the first time we're doing this?
Yes, sir. It's a, it's a new, because of Tyler has a new software called SelfServe.
So, we can do this, then?
Yes, sir.
And I noticed that it'd take any credit card except American Express?
Oh, no, it takes everything but American Express.
That's what, yeah, it takes everything but American Express.
Right, yeah.
Don't leave home without it.
Yeah.
It'll work here, okay? All right. Any discussion, further discussion? Any questions of Ms. Lang?
I'll make the motion to allow the county judge to sign the Merrick Bank Merchant Processing Agreement Application and Fee Schedule.
Second. All right, well, look at this. What a good court we got here.
Those are up here.
All right, motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to allow the county judge to sign the agreement with Merrick Bank Merchant Processing Agreement, second by both Mr. Wilson and Mr. Andrews at exactly the same time. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Ms. Lang.
Thank you, Court.
Okay. Item number four, discuss and take appropriate action to award contract RFQ 2021-011 for professional medical physician services for inmate health care and Hood County law enforcement and detention officer personnel care. Mr. Glenn, how are you doing? Killman?
Yes, good morning, Judge, Commissioners. RFQ 2021-111 was opened on September 20th at 10:00 a.m. in the purchasing department. There was one qualified response, which was Acton Medical Clinic. They were evaluated and scored, and they, they scored highly. Therefore, purchasing and Sheriff's Office recommend that the contract be awarded to the Acton Medical Clinic.
Any questions? Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the, award the contract, excuse me, RFQ 2021-011 for professional medical physician services for inmate health care and Hood County law enforcement detention officer personnel care.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the law enforcement detention service contract, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Next, item number five. Thank you. Consider and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign the 2022 Hood County Resolution for the Indigent Defense Formular Grant Program. District Judge, County Judge. Well, I guess this is something that we have to have all the time. It's something that we do sign. So, I recommend that we authorize the county judge to sign this Hood County Resolution for the Indigent Defense Formular Grant Program. Hopefully, we get some money. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Motion been made by the county judge. Authorize the county judge to sign the Hood County Resolution for the Indigent Defense Formular Grant Program, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Item number six, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the county judge to sign the state case registry cooperation, cooperative agreement between the Office of the Attorney General of the State of Texas and Hood County. Well, that again is something that we have to have and do every year, so I recommend that we do sign it and authorize me to do it, and I make that motion.
Second.
Second. Aye, Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Item number seven, discuss and take appropriate action to accept the quote from Self Radio, Inc. for the purchase of radio communication repeaters and mobile interoperability equipment in the amount of $42,863.10, Sheriff Deeds.
Judge, Commissioners, this will be to enhance the system we have in place now and for the future with the fire departments. This will be equipment that will put out at the con plantation, so it'll help the south and east area of the county. So, it'll greatly improve fire department reception out there, too, and my own with the law enforcement stuff we have in place now. And I'd ask that this be funded out of Fund 83. I did hear from Jay Webster, so he said Fund 83.
Okay. Any questions or discussions for the sheriff? Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the quote from Self Radio Incorporated for the purchase of radio communication repeaters and mobile interoperability equipment in the amount of $42,863.10 to be paid out of Fund 83.
Do I have a second to Commissioner Cotton's motion, second by Commissioner Andrews? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number eight, discuss and take appropriate action to move the Development Office and Environmental Office from Annex 3 to the Acton Annex Complex. This move will then allow for the space currently held by the Environmental Office for a Texas Department Driver's License Office to be open in Annex 3. We have two speakers for this. Number one is Leanne McCoy. Ms. McCoy?
Good morning. I'm pretty sure I know this is going to be a mute point, but being in the building already, I just feel like there are some concerns and some safety issues having more public come in into the building, and maybe there's some reconstruction and some design that we need to talk about before we have more public coming in. I don't know what else to say, other than adding doors and maybe a little bit more security. It's just not going to be the same, 10 people a week versus 30 people a day. And being a resident of Precinct 2 and living pretty far out, I know that toller is a long drive for most, and I understand that completely, but I think there are other options, so...
Do you have any concern about, I know we, how many times do we pick up money with the Sheriff's Office from your...
Well, Sheriff Offices, they do pick up twice a week, which I don't have a concern with. What I have a concern with is people who are bringing in cash. That's the concern, and it's not, I mean, it's not small amounts, so it makes it a little difficult when you do have more people coming in and out of there.
All of the offices, with the exception of environmental and development, are currently behind ciphered doors in the first place. You've got people coming in, bringing money in now. That's not going to change. You know, there's still going to be, you know, the pickup's still going to be done twice a week, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and if it becomes necessary, we add another, another day, but that's...
That's not the, that's not the... That's not the problem. The problem is not the pickup with the Sheriff's Office coming to the building to pick up. The problem is individual offices like Adult Probation bringing in cash. We've got Animal Control that brings in cash. We've got Road Operations bringing in cash. You've got several departments themselves bringing in cash without any security. That's where the issue comes into play.
The driver's license is a short term because there is already an architect drawing for a permanent facility that will be probably January 24 when it is done. And that will move them out of there, so this is temporary. We also looked at putting the driver's license office in Annex Three, you know, in Suite 102. By moving, by doing what we're proposing here, by moving Development, Environmental out, you know, there's minimal work has to be done on any of them. We've got, you know, and it'll be less than a fourth of what it was going to cost to renovate, you know, the Acton office to put the driver's license in there. And again, since it's only a temporary till probably January of 2024, you know, DPS will then have a full-service facility in the county on the Fort Worth side of the county that will have either eight or a 12-bay station, one of those two. They're already involved in the architectural design.
So when you're talking about public coming in, what's your estimated public entrance in the building every single day?
The numbers indicate it's probably going to be somewhere between 15 to 20 a day, possibly even more. You know, for, everybody will still have to schedule to come in, you know, so we will know who's on the schedule. It would not best be a free walk-in. But they do have to schedule, just like they have to schedule at any other driver's license office in the state.
So there's no walk-ins at all?
Not at this time. It's not, you know, DPS is not allowing it. Everybody will be scheduled, just like they're scheduled now.
My son was home for a month, and they walked into Toller and walked straight in and...
I mean, you've got people walking in daily wanting to, you know, get their driver's license read done, and I know that for a fact.
I have nothing against DPS office coming into Granbury. Have no problem with that at all. The problem is I think we just need to discuss more of a secure area. Even until 2024, you're still looking at more public coming into the building when we have employees without, they're not even carrying, coming in with large sums of cash. That's my only point.
And again, that's no different from what goes on today.
Well, I mean, honestly, we get maybe like 10 people a week. So like I said, I know that it's not going to change anyone's mind, but I do have some concerns and would before, you know, I'm pretty sure you're going to approve it and would like for you to come speak to my office for us to be able to give you our concerns. And maybe some alterations to do. Because it does affect the whole building, and I know that the whole building is not approved. They don't approve of the complete DPS coming in.
It's already been addressed that, you know, just past the two restrooms in the hallway, putting a door, you know, going into the, you know, kitchen area, you know, the break area back there, and that will be minimal expense there also.
I would recommend before the bathroom door, we have one...
Not a problem.
So, well, I appreciate you taking time to listen.
Okay. Mr. Harold Granik, Dr. Harold Granik.
Judge and Commissioners, I had to wake up this early. I couldn't stand not speaking, but I'll be brief. I just encourage that we bring the motor vehicle registration back into Tarrant County from the point of view of the elderly and the handicapped for it'd be easier for them to get their IDs so that they can register to vote. Mechanics of it, trust can be worked out.
Thank you, Dr. Granik. Is there any other discussion or questions?
You know, there is. Surely, there are some things that we can do to modify that over there and make that a little bit more secure. Because that's, I see your concern. That does, that is a very important thing. Is there a way that we could just table this for now and look at it in a couple of weeks? Maybe have a workshop and go through some of this so that, you know, the people that are in that building now could be a little more, feel a little better about what we're doing, and we can address those concerns before we decide to make that move?
Does DPS already make any plans to come here right away?
There's, you know, current schedule, in all probability, will be opening that facility January 2. That will allow time to make, you know, for the movement and, you know, get the, you know, their equipment in because they're furnishing all of the equipment. They're furnishing all the training. This will be a county-run facility for the time until the permanent full-service DPS operation is in place, which, like I said earlier, will be probably January 2024. The licensing office will only be allowed to do renewals, change of address, change of name, lost license. No written test, no driving test will be, you know, performed in that, in this office. You know, but it is a benefit to the citizens of the county that are having to go to Toller, Stevenville, Cleveland, Weatherford, and even to Fort Worth. The, in the fiscal year 1920 and a half of 21, out of zip code 76048049, just under 2,900 went to Cleveland, Stevenville, or Weatherford. And that does not include the numbers that went to the mega centers in Fort Worth. And it does not include the numbers that went to Toller. And all of them are running anywhere from six to eight-week lead on scheduling as we speak right now. This will help alleviate part of that.
So in other words, before we have people coming in there, we have two and a half months that we can make any kind of additions that we would feel that were necessary. But are the, is the DPS going to start making the innovations or the remodeling right now?
DPS already has a layout of that, of the environmental offices. They've already visited, and their DPS facilities is working on that now. I expect something from them probably next week. That's, we've, it's something that's been ongoing effort for over five months.
Maybe these are two separate issues that maybe we stop and have a workshop and take a look at what we can do to secure your area, go forward with what we're doing here, and then look at that as a separate issue, so.
I do have a question. If you're not going to have a workshop, I will need some direction on how you plan on hiring who will be the immediate supervisor for this department and things like that also.
Haven't you posted?
No, sir.
I thought you said we were going to, you had posted for employment of these individuals. No?
Not yet.
No.
Well, here's the only thing that we don't want to have. We don't want to have anybody with DPS thinking that we're changing our mind about this. We've already got them committed to going forward on the thing. They're not going to start taking any money until January of 2022. We have time to make any kind of innovations, any kind of safety deals, should that come up that we need to do in the next two and a half months. I think it may send the wrong signal to the Department of Public Safety that we're tabling something. So I, I'm against tabling. I think we should go ahead and approve this to let DPS know we're for it. We want to do it, and we have time that we could do any kind of safety precautions before we start taking any money and allowing other people to come into that office. As it is right now, if somebody wanted to rob the Treasurer's Office, you could come straight in there right now. Anybody could walk straight into Annex Three right now. Am I right, LeAnn?
You're right.
So, you know, if you had a mind to rob the place, you could go in there right now. That'd prevent anybody from coming in.
Well, it's different knowing that there's people coming in and out and...
Well, one of the things that would deter me is knowing that the DPS office was in there. DPS means DPS troopers coming in there, too. So I don't know. You up here, you want to say something, or you just walking around?
Yes. No, I was going to...
Have you ever heard about these public participation forums and all?
Yes, sir, but this is after all of this.
Well, this is your first meeting, I understand. But since it's your office, we're going to go ahead and let you speak. All right, Miss Stacks.
I'm Chinese, and I apologize.
Yeah.
Okay, the one thing...
Come on, get the microphone up here, please.
One of the things that I'm not sure they know, my office feels between five and 10 people coming in daily asking where the driver's license office is. So you're not going to change the traffic that much in the building? Just, I'm just saying that because our office is the only office that's open to the public over there, and they come to it continuously.
And that doesn't, you know, discount the fact that there's a sign on the front door and a sign on the table with instructions of how to get to the one in Toller and how to sign up, you know, already.
Yes.
See, that's what I'm saying. I think that it's best, when you consider all these factors and the fact that you have enough time to address your issues, LeAnn, I don't want to send any wrong signal to DPS. I think this would be a big benefit to the people here in Hood County to alleviate them having to go to Cleveland, Stevenville, Weatherford.
And don't get me wrong, I mean, I agree.
Oh, you want it. I understand. You just...
I agree that.
Yeah.
But I think there just needs to be a little bit more communication when things like this come up for us to be able to discuss the options on what we actually have.
Okay, well, we got, we have two and a half months that we can do this.
Right.
Okay? So with that, that's my say on it. I'd like to keep everything moving. We have time to make adjustments between the time they actually open. So, did you make a mo, was that, did you make it in form of a motion?
No, sir, I just kind of asked, and I, and like I said, I kind of went back on that and said, I think that these are two separate issues. We can go ahead and move forward with the DPS, but we need to spend some time looking at securing the building and making that work better on that end.
I see Mr. Jay Riley back there. Mr. Jay Riley, when you're doing all this, please keep in mind that we want to keep everybody safe like you always do.
Yes.
And see what you can do and come up with. That ingenious mind of yours are always thinking outside the box now. So that's what we like about you. So in that case, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, I approve, I move that we approve the movement of the Development Office and Environmental Office from Annex Three to the Acton Annex Complex. And then that will allow that space to currently held by Environmental Office for the Texas DPS Driver's License Office to be open in Annex Three.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion been made in second to allow Environmental and Development to move to the Acton Complex so that the DPS can use that space for issuings of driver's license here for the residents of Hood County. Made by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you all very much.